I'd like to call this February 22th Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Ms. Kilbane? I believe she's out of town. Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Ocek?
Here.
And Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, and the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is a review of our strategic priorities. Our strategic priorities, our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan, which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. There are four strategic priorities to the plan: transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leveraging funding and facilities. And our strategic plan helps us determine how we make every decision. And so our call-out or our shout-out for today is that our high school and middle school programs of studies are on the agenda. These comprehensive lists of courses are available to our students, and they're an example of transforming teaching and learning as a strategic priority. And next, I have OSBA Student Achievement.
Can I have Mr. So come up here, please? All right, so for our Extra Mile Award this year at the preschool, or this month at the preschool, we chose two students, and we have a staff member that will do after the students. So this is Benny. Hi Benny! Yay, thanks for being here Benny! This is Benny's second year with us at the preschool at the Lund Road location. If you don't know, we have two preschool locations because we kind of outgrew our size at Lund Road a few years ago. But for the Extra Mile Award, Benny has made such great progress both verbally and with his voice-output device. So Benny speaks with an AAC device, which has an app that can speak for him. He is verbal, but he uses both. His academic learning continues to amaze us, but most of all, his interactions with peers and staff. He will share, make eye contact, say hi and bye, and play with others. Way to go Benny, we are so proud of you! Oh, you're gonna get one. Ready? Let's move everybody high five.
Good job buddy.
You wanna shake everyone's hand? High five? Let's move everybody high five.
I can't skip me.
Okay, for our next student, we have Kashika, if you'd like to come up? So Kashika attends our Chapman preschool location with Ms. Maloney in her class. She is a kind friend who consistently goes the extra mile in the classroom. She is a self-directed learner, flexible thinker, problem solver, and collaborator. She always amazes us with her ability to notice when a peer needs some encouragement. Her friends and teachers are grateful for her empathy, compassion, and leadership. Let's give her a round of applause.
You can say whatever you want.
It's okay, it's a thank you for everything.
Thank you for everything.
All right, and for our staff award, Ms. Chrissy Penzone. So Chrissy is with us at the Lund Road preschool in Ms. Lynn's classroom. Not only is she a special education aide, she's also a registered behavior technician. So for those of you who don't know, she's gone through 40 hours of training in the Principals of ABA and passed a very challenging exam to be a registered behavior technician with us in the district. Chrissy was an easy choice for me for the Extra Mile Award. She has a huge heart, she goes above and beyond on a daily basis. I was just in the classroom today watching her with students, and honestly, watching her interact gives me joy because she's such a joy to be around. She imparts that joy on our students and our staff and the whole building, and if you're looking for a smile, she's always wearing one, no matter the circumstances, getting kids in and out of the cars, and pouring down rain like today, and just always has a smile on her face. So not only that, but she thinks on her toes, she has creative ways to engage all of our students, even when maybe they don't want to do what we're asking them to do, which happens a lot in preschool. And then I had to add this in there, as a registered behavior technician, if you ever want to know the function of someone's behavior, you can ask Chrissy, because chances are, she's already figured it out, she's 10 steps ahead of you, and she's got that visual cue way where she is. Thank you Chrissy!
Congratulations to all of our winners, and let's give them another round of applause to share how proud we are of them. Continuing on with our recognitions, I'd like to ask Mr. Wengler, our high school principal, to come to the podium to start our recognitions of our high school girls soccer team this year.
All right, good evening. Before I bring the crew up here, I just want to say good luck to all of our winter sports. Playoffs are starting, and I think what has probably been the most successful winter sports season in a really long time. Hockey won the Baron Cup, we have two swimmers tomorrow at the state meet, gymnastics, the entire team qualified for state next Saturday. We have girls basketball kick off their playoffs, as soon as I'm done here, we're gonna go watch them. They were GCC champs, 20-2 record. Boys, they kick off, they finish tomorrow night and they kick off playoffs next week. I believe they finished 19-5, which has been a crazy great season. So speaking of crazy great, before I call up the soccer coaches, you know, in my, in my four years at Strongsville, I've been to two state finals, state semifinal, and I don't remember the year after the big state championship, but I think we went up to Sandusky and made maybe quarterfinals, semis. So one of the things I look forward to every year is, I will be honest, I'm not a soccer person by trade, I've grown to love the sport. Every year, I go to these soccer games and I become a soccer fan, A, because we're so doggone good, and B, because I've learned the nuances of the game, which is the passing, the movements, and I've learned a lot from Coach Fadenholz, and she's been hired, Coach Felton and I talk every morning, and he fills me in all the time. So I'm gonna call up the coaches to honor their team and just let them know, you know, the excellence that they show every year is a model for every program at Strongsville. So Coach, head coach Chloe Fadenholz, I see Coach Felton, come on up. Thank Coach Muth.
Thank you, Mr. Wengler. First, I want to say thank you for having us here again this year, we really appreciate getting to be recognized by our board members, and we've introduced all of our coaches, I also want to thank my coaching staff, because I could not have done this job without them. It is a lot of work, and it is so much fun, and it's been the greatest, again, opportunity to get to work with such great athletes. And I'm gonna call them up, one at a time, and you guys can come up and shake hands. Okay, so Ava Theryan? Ava Spiezak? Elise Antonelli? Marlena Bechker? Evie Kritis? Campbell Falk? Jenna Farren? Macy Felton? Hadley Gorowski? Angelina Janjatovic? Gabby Keith? Abby Kudla? Paige Kudla? Aubrey Madden? Alexa Muth? Grace Pascoe? Lilly Papa? Taylor Papa? Julia Rocky? Julia Scally? Lynn Severin? Courtney Chafron? Leah Snell? Sam Alex? And Savannah Spiezak? All right, and again, we want to thank the board, so for, we appreciate you guys, and so we brought you some soccer cookies.
We should celebrate soccer every meeting.
Show our appreciation for all of your support for the girls soccer team, continued support for the girls soccer team.
I'm a way bigger fan than he is. This side's way bigger fans than that side. Congratulations.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, before everybody takes off, real quick, just again, congratulations to a phenomenal program, our coaching staff, you know, it's tough to be great, it's tough to be great once, but to be great year after year after year is just years of countless effort and dedication, and, you know, I've had the privilege of, I feel similar to what Mr. Wengler said. You know, for years and years, I've gone to soccer games as administration, and I finally enjoy watching soccer. And so a big part of it is learning the game and seeing phenomenal talent out there playing each and every fall. So congratulations, I know it's a 12-month-a-year commitment to be as good as you are each and every day, and enjoy the moment, and we look forward to seeing you out there next fall, for those of you that are returning. Mr. Miko, any final comments you'd like to share?
I just want to share, and I'm fond of saying this, I wanted to thank the student athletes for all their efforts and all the work they do, the parents for all their efforts and all the work they do, and the community for their efforts and all the work they do. But what I will share with you is that the example you are setting, there are younger Mustangs who are watching you, and now they can set their sights on great goals and accomplishments for the future. So thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for being model Mustangs. And with that, I know some of you have homework to finish, so you're all welcome to leave. You're also welcome to stay, because our meetings are so exciting.
What? I said bring that baby here.
So we're gonna continue our meeting. For the, for those in the televised audience, all the students made the right choice and are leaving to do homework. Next on our agenda is public comment, and I do have two public comments. First is Mary Martin. Mary, welcome to our meeting. If you could let us know your name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mary Martin, and I live at 20187 Ellsworth Drive, and I know I have three minutes, so I'm going to try to speak quickly, but clearly. So my friend and I are here today to talk to you about better understanding our concerns for the lack of half-day kindergarten at Kinzner, and I can't find my notes, so give me one second, I don't know if you started the clock. Oh, goodness gracious.
I don't know how to tell time.
Okay, good, that's a good, I printed out a handout for you guys, and I lost my notes, so, yeah, it's gonna, I have my long notes, but here we go. Okay, so we have a couple of concerns about the lack of half-day kindergarten at all of our elementary buildings, and we're here to just kind of give you a brief overview of our concerns, so thank you for taking a few minutes to listen to us today. I'm gonna start by citing the Ohio Department of Education. They require half-day kindergarten for all students, and state that some school districts can or may offer all-day kindergarten, but if a family requests only half-day kindergarten for a child, the district must accommodate the family's request. And this district obviously interprets that accommodation being met by offering half-day kindergarten at schools other than a child's homeschool. And we've talked to the superintendent, and we appreciate all of your time in talking to both of you, but you have described space constraints to us as a child being displaced from a classroom, or an encore class being displaced, and we feel that requiring a child to attend a different building is beyond a classroom displacement. I was a member of the elementary facilities planning committee, it was a wonderful experience, so I am acutely aware of the district's redevelopment and redistricting needs, and I don't want to diminish how, you know, profound those are, but as a committee, we defined some goals, and very broadly, they were the safety of our students, transportation for the elementary students, and equity and continuity for the educational experience. And under this current model, those goals are just not being met, and it's really impacting our youngest and our most vulnerable children. And we don't think that these can be resolved overnight, but we think that in the short term, there's things that we can do to better address these needs, because we simply just can't wait till the schools are redeveloped. So a couple of things to consider, one, capacity and enrollment. We know that all five elementary schools are overcapacity, but Kinzner's leading the pack at approximately like 130 students. Whitney has similar numbers, but from my understanding, they still have half-day kindergarten at their building, and then the other three elementary schools are under 100 students overcapacity. So our question to you as a board and staff is, how can we more equitably allocate these overages to ensure that Kinzner is not unjustly overcapacity? The second consideration is cost. Full-day kindergarten is cost prohibitive to, prohibitive to some families, so the solution for those families creates logistical, transportation, and other complications by splitting siblings into two buildings. And kind of circling back to that committee, we rejected like a grade-banding model for those exact considerations, and that's what you're asking of those families. Almost done. So those two things, don't even consider like the pros and cons of a half-day versus full-day model, and I won't even get into those today. I just can anecdotally say, for my family, the half-day schedule has been extremely wonderful, and we had a great experience. I didn't state this before, I have a son in first grade and an upcoming kindergartner. And there's a few reasons I feel this way, I'm gonna give you a brief quote, "Play is the work of a child, and once they enter the school system, that shift changes from play to school, and it never goes back." And I think this half-day schedule gives us one more year of a kind of a schedule that young kids can, can better accommodate. So that's anecdotal, but my proximity to Kinzner is a fact. I am a two-minute drive and an eight-minute walk to Kinzner. So for my family, we have to prioritize logistics, I'm not going to split my children up, and I'm not going to send my five-year-old, I use across-town, but to any other school, it just doesn't make sense. So by making those priorities to my family, then we lose the ability to have a half-day kindergarten class. So I just want to close with, we understand that the board took care in making the determination to consolidate half-day kindergarten into specific buildings, and we know that wasn't made lightly, and we know it was done for a reason. Our ask is that you just simply reevaluate that. We want to consider alternatives, perhaps the addition of portables, or prioritizing redistricting prior to a redevelopment, so that Kinzner is not unjustly overcapacity, and we're open to suggestions, but we just want to let you know that this is a concern of ours. So we are happy to help work together for a solution, but just something to consider.
That was 2 minutes and 52 seconds.
No way!
So if you have eight more seconds you'd like to use...
Well, I have handouts, if you want them, we can also email them.
Email would be perfect. And next is Francia, did I say it right?
Francia Ordonez.
Francia Ordonez, and you have approximately three minutes, and I will be as good with a stopwatch with you as I was.
I'm really close, I've been parapracticing all day.
With Mary. Name, address, and let us know what you want to tell us.
My name is Francia Ordonez, I live at 167795 Badger Dun Lane, and I'm also here to talk about the reinstatement of half-day kindergarten at Kinzner. I'm one of the many parents of an incoming kindergartner who feels very strongly about the reinstatement of half-day kindergarten at Kinzner. Many of us have emailed Dr. Raiba, Ms. Pelco, and Mr. Marconi about our want and need for half-day kindergarten to be reinstated. Tonight, I'm here to share with you the consequences that face our children and schools is half-day kindergarten is not reinstated for the 2024-2025 school year. After interviewing several registered behavioral technicians, board-certified behavior analysts, current and retired elementary school teachers, and researching medical journals from Boston Children's, the Mayo Clinic, John Hopkins, and our very own Cleveland Clinic, the negative impact that it'll make on the children, families, and teachers from these kids having to make three big transitions in a year is grave. Three transitions? Let me clarify, if we don't reinstate half-day kindergarten at Kinzner, these kids will face their first transition from going to preschool to new school with new, with new people for kindergarten in August of '24. Then one short year later, they will have to face two transitions at once, they will switch again to a new school, and be facing the change of going half-day to full-day. The research that I've done can be boiled down to this, the amount and the intensity of these transitions in such a short time will result in increased maladaptive behaviors in the classroom, emotional distress, and increased time to learning, and adjusting to their new learning environment. This will delay the children's ability to obtain and retain information, learning, and increase the need for teacher intervention and attention, taking away from teachers implementing their lesson plans. These consequences will not be short-lived, but rather take years of adjusting that will not only impact the child's educational experience, but potentially future state testing scores, and so much more. The reinstatement of half-day kindergarten comes down to space. This is an issue nations, districts nationwide have been facing for decades. If communities across America can solve this space issue without negatively impacting students, I have no doubt that Strongsville can. Between the parents, the great minds in this room, and leveraging district partners and relationship, I'm sure there is a reasonable and economic solution that will deter these potential threats to our students, teachers, and families. The last point I want to make is a safety issue. I know how highly the Strongsville City School District holds safety. You will now be asking families to incur two possible safety issues. One, families who are zoned for Kinzner will have to travel farther to schools in case of an emergency. Whether their child gets hurt, sick, elopes, anything, this increased time to get to our children could not only be detrimental, but catastrophic. Second, you are strong-arming families who know that half-day kindergarten is the right choice for their child, but to, and will thrive in a half-day kindergarten setting, but will burn out and flounder in a full-day kindergarten setting. Again, this results in increased maladaptive behaviors and emotional distress that will affect the classrooms and put more responsibility on our teachers. I'm here today to ask you to put the reinstatement of half-day kindergartner at Kinzner for the 24-25 school year to the top of your priorities, as the consequences for not reinstating are far too grave for our teachers, children, and families. as the consequences for not reinstating are far too grave for our teachers, children, and families. Thank you.
I just want to thank both of you for taking the time to visit us. We've been grappling with these issues. We're gonna continue to grapple with these issues. We're gonna grapple with these issues at this very meeting. But what I want to share from a board level is our goal is to be about customer service. I can't make any promises because we have to go through the matter at hand, but we'll be honest, we'll be forthright, and we'll address your concerns. So thank you for joining us at the meeting. You'd be surprised what you can get out of a superintendent with cookies.
Where'd they go?
I repeat. I repeat. You can be surprised.
They were up on the desk.
And I guess the moms have homework to do also. Next, next on our agenda is approval of minutes. I have the February 22, 2024 board...oh, no, that is the board meeting. I have the January 11 board meeting minutes, the January 11 work session board meeting minutes, the January 25 regular meeting minutes, and the February 8 work session meeting minutes. And those will all be part of our consent calendar. Next is treasurer's report. Mr. Onagostu, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first one being the monthly board report for January 31 of 2024. Pull that up. This is the supplemental report that I usually do. How we ended in January in comparison to our five-year forecast that was presented in November. Current year-to-date revenue collections indicate $148,000 favorable compared to forecast. Current year expenditures compare $590,000 favorable to the forecast for an overall net impact of $738,000 to the favorable impact on the cash balance. The current monthly cash flow estimate for June 30, 2024 is $49,335,000, which would be an operating surplus of 3.2 million for this fiscal year. Revenue collection for January in comparison to last January. January is our first month where we get our tax advance. This year, it was $109,000 less for January of 2.8 million, where last year was about 2.9 million. I will say, so with this half of the year, tax collections, we receive an advance in January, another advance in March, or another advance in February, and then the settlement is in March. Usually, the February advance is the larger of the three. Last year was about $24 million. This year, we did receive it this February last week. It was about $6 million less than compared to last year. After doing some digging, it was due to the county had pushed back their filing deadlines for when homeowners had to pay their property taxes, but kept the advance stays the same. So the anticipation is March's revenue estimate...or revenue collection is gonna be $6 million higher than last March as well. And then year-to-date revenues through January in comparison to last year. Property taxes are about $191,000 less. State revenue is about $400,000 more, and all of the revenue sources are about $790,000 higher than last year, compared to last year at this time, for a total comparison of $1 million higher. And the primary difference in the other revenue is interest revenue, which is about $662,000 higher through January in comparison to last January. And how that's comparing against the forecast. As I mentioned, overall revenues are trending about $148,000 higher compared to the forecast. State revenue is about $131,000 less. Net against other revenue, primarily interest income, which interest income is about $248,000 higher than the forecast for the net impact of $148,000, which is about 0.17% difference to the forecast. Any questions on revenues? Moving on to expenditures. Overall expenditures for the month of January in comparison to last January are about $810,000 less. Salary and benefits are about $340,000 more. While purchase services and other expenditures are about $400,000 less, which nets to about $110,000. A year-to-date January of this year compared to last January, overall expenditures are about $2.1 million higher. That is 4.5% higher than last year, and then also about 12% higher than the prior year as well. The biggest differences are salaries and benefits are about $2.5 million higher in comparison to last year. And how it's trending against the five-year forecast. Our biggest savings is in salaries and benefits, where it's about $650,000 favorable compared to the forecast. We'll add, we do have this year compared to prior years, a lot of people on FMLA leave. That's vacating positions. Not just vacate...they're on leave, which we're bringing in other people to fill those positions at a lower rate. And then also, we had in the classified staff, a lot of openings throughout the year as well. So and then how that savings compares to the forecast is about 0.7% less than the annual forecast. And then I do want to add another point to the...any questions on expenditures? I wanted to go to cash for a minute.
The comparison in January, is that primarily the fact that the purchase services and other expenses are down? Is that a timing issue? Or is there a reason other than bully for us?
No, those are just timing issues. Timing and a lot of those are servicing goods when their invoices come in, those occur.
Because I was gonna ask you how you figured out how to get around inflation, but I assumed it was a timing issue.
Yeah. And then switching over to the...this was a supplemental report, but to the actually the monthly report. There is a table in there that has the revenues and expenditures by month. What I wanted to highlight, as I talked about at last meeting, was there's been a lot of talk about our cash balance. But I want to, as I said in prior years, or in prior meetings, our revenues come in essentially through the property taxes five times a year. July, we get an advance. August, we get our settlement. And then in January, we get another advance. February, we get an advance, and then March is a settlement. And we kind of rely on that cash to get us through the year. So just looking at this chart, I'm just trying to make it a little bit bigger on the... So for the month of July, we received a property tax advance, but the net change in cash was our expenditures exceeded our cash. August, we got our big settlement, our second-half collections. And then that cash got us through the rest of the calendar year. So each month, we spent more than that month's revenue that came in. And then same thing with January. We did get a small advance. Our revenues for that month were $4 million. Our expenditures were $6.3 million. So cumulative through January for the fiscal year, we've spent $2.1 million more than we brought in this fiscal year. Granted, February, we're gonna get a bigger settlement in March. But then again, April, May, and June, we spend that down. So having the cash balance that we have helps us through those ebbs and flows of when we receive the cash in order to spend those and be able to have, in order to still make the investments that we make to generate the interest income that we do that we're able to provide resources back into the school as well. So just also want to highlight, this time of year, January, December, January, before this big advance comes in, is the low point for cash for the year. And as I stated before, go back 10 years. And this was a time where the district was borrowing cash to make payroll in anticipation of the tax dollars that are coming in. So that's one of the benefits of our cash balance policy, where we have minimums, maxims to help us through these ebbs and flows.
I think another way to say the same thing is, you know, sometimes companies have cash accounting because cash tracks well, and sometimes companies use accrual accounting. And it's to be able to decipher the difference between grabbing a point in time where, oh my gosh, it feels like the business or the school district must be doing really well because in March, we got a large, a large amount of tax money from the county. But I think the better tool, the tool that we use as a board and in administration, and I think the tool the public should use is our five-year forecast. Because it doesn't just narrow in on one specific day in time, but it tells the entire story year after year after year. So thank you, George.
And any questions on the monthly report? And the other two items that I have is a grant approval. Be a resolve upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following grant be approved for fiscal year '24. This is ukuleles for the fifth-grade music program at SRR. This was a grant application through the SEF that is being split with a SRR PTA. Now, the SRR PTA is donating $500, while the Strongsville Education Foundation is donating $700. And then lastly, be a resolve upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the amended appropriate permanent appropriations be approved for fiscal year '24. The following changes are listed on the exhibit. O19 fund is for the SEF grant, O35 for the termination benefits fund, an increase of $58,000, which was adjustments due to change in estimate based on what we actually paid versus what we estimated. And then the federal funds are based on a reallocation from the state level. And then there'll probably be another reallocation for the federal funds by the state, either by the end of this month or next month. And with that, that concludes my report.
Any questions for George? Just like to make a board-level personal request that all ukulele concerts we get told about in advance, so we can...
All the principals are here, so...
I think we're gonna have to look at changing our excellence in academics, arts, and athletics to add the ukulele. Next on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Raiba, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We do have a discussion item tonight on elementary space. So it's timely, the public comment that was shared by our Kinsner parents today. And as you could see, I'd like to thank our preschool and elementary principals for being here tonight. All of them are here with us, taking another night away from their family to share the importance of the challenges we face and some recommendations we have. And I thought it was best that you hear the reality of day-to-day life from the folks that are leading those buildings. I do want to share Katie Hawke, our Whitney Elementary Principal, her regret. She was down in Columbus today for a leadership cohort she's in, so wasn't able to be with us tonight. But she's given me permission to fill in for her and some of her colleagues as well. So what we want to do is, you know what I'm thinking? I shared some guidelines with the principals, but I think it'd be easier, maybe we just go a building at a time. So Megan, if you want to come up and you're brief, preschool. But what we want to start with is the current state. Current state, what is happening? What did we do that's new for this year at the preschool? And what are some other factors to keep into consideration? So as you could see, we didn't make any changes this year at the Lund Road preschool. We added an additional section at Chapman. Megan said in her recognition, we're out of space. And one of the things, as you may know, is by law, when students are identified with disabilities at age three, no matter when that is, we need to have a place for us or provide itinerant services. So we never know what that enrollment is gonna be. We project, and Andy and Megan and the team have done a very good job at that. So just to consider that there's no room for growth at Lund Road preschool. So Megan, I'm gonna turn it over to you to kind of share a little bit about the context of what that means on a daily basis, related services spaces, how you're managing since we're out of room at the preschool.
Sure. So right now, at Lund Road, I actually just looked this morning. We're full in the AM, which means we don't have spots for peers or IEPs. In the PM, I have three spots left. So we're full over there. Chapman's in a better spot. But what that means is that transportation's gonna have to start taking kids out of bounds. So it's gonna increase transportation times or change the routes, which is always tough for our families. So we do have room, I think, till the end of the year. But it does make me a little bit nervous, you know, given the fact that we sent about 100 kids onto kindergarten. We're at 230 kids right now. It's huge. So I think people think, you know, preschool is this tiny little building, small space. It was, but it's huge and it continues to grow. So like Cameron said, there is nowhere else at Lund Road. We don't have any space. The rooms outside of our elevator, I wouldn't guess I wouldn't call it a room. It's an area. Those are like our one-on-one ABA spaces. I lost my OTPT room to a full classroom. I lost my maker space that's in our teacher lunchroom, so they check it out on a cart. So we've made it work. It's just not ideal. So we don't have the therapy spaces that we used to have. And then Chapman's, obviously, it's been great to be there, but it's also a struggle to fit our class in with a gym because then our preschool takes six sections of gym, which is hard when you're running a full building with 300-plus kids. So it's been okay-ish for the time being. There's just also no therapy locations for preschoolers because you can't combine them with school-aged children. So we're just kind of in a little predicament of what to do.
So one of the things to keep in mind, even though it's been paused at this time because of the renewal levy, is part of our master facilities plan for the preschool elementary level was to, because of the space challenges we're having, was to look at making Maraski an administrative building. We would relocate there and then rebuild a part of it to be a preschool. As Megan said, it is a small-size elementary school. So that two different locations...Megan, talk a little bit about the step up to quality and what that means and how that's...it's not just preschool as a whole. It's different by location, correct?
Sure. Yeah. So licensing is the same for everyone. The state comes in and inspects. It's 199 rules, if anybody's counting, in every location from things of like, do you have outlet covers in? Is everybody wearing a badge that has their name on it? Counting kids to see if we're in ratio. But step up to quality takes it to another level. And if you've seen the little banners on public daycares or preschools in the area, you know, you get a star rating system. So for local schools who are not ODE Ron or DEW, the new, you know, ODE, they get funding for the higher the star level they get. We don't. So a higher revised code says, "ODE, you gotta do it," but you don't really get anything in return. So what Cameron was mentioning, for me, running the two locations, you're supposed to be in those 50% of the time. So I should be splitting my time 50/50. And the challenging part for me is that the goals for the program can't be the same. So we have a continuous improvement plan that goes out to families, and they indicate which building they're in. And then I have to take that feedback from stakeholder, community, parents, and staff, and then create different continuous improvement plans for each building. So whereas there's the same, like, essence of what's going on, Chapman's goals are not the same as Lund Road's goals. It's very challenging having staff in two buildings, trying to run, you know, our TBTs, BLTs, staff meetings, PBIS, and try to hit people in both locations at once. So it's manageable, but it's just a lot of extra work having a secondary location instead of having it all under one roof.
Any questions on the preschool for Megan right now?
What's the breakdown on the 230?
For like IEPs versus peers?
No, you said you have 230 students. How many of them are at the Lund Road, and how many of them are at Chapman?
I only know from looking at class lists recently that Lund has about 160. So, and that's AM and PM, so they're not all there at the same exact time.
Well, as we go through the discussion, Megan's gonna be here. So if anything else preschool comes up, we can ask her to come back up, but thanks, Megan.
All right. Thank you.
And my goodness, Ms. Harold from Chapman, coming off of, still on maternity leave. We've got three young fathers over there, so if Carter starts to need some assistance...
Mr. Binkley's helping me out right now. I said just keep it rocking. It was bedtime for a two and a four-year-old, so he had no option.
We will move forward with the pleasantries and get her going because she's got a young one with us tonight. But thank you for being here, Kaylee.
Not a problem. Thanks for the opportunity.
So new for Chapman this year, it was the test pilot for the mobile unit, right? And so Kaylee can share a little bit more of that. But things to keep into consideration as we talk about Chapman is we have three preschool classrooms that are there. We have two elementary schools that support students with modern intensive needs. Chapman's one of them. Art and music has been a big topic. Are they on cards? Are we able to keep classrooms? So far, we've been able to keep them in a classroom. And Media Center has been parsed up, parceled out to have different small-group learning spaces. So Kaylee, if you want to share a little more detail about that and then go into some of the other factors of how you're making it all fit at Chapman.
Sure. So due to our space constraints, the mobile unit came to Chapman for this school year. And there is, if you haven't been in one, one side is where our students that receive gifted math services receive their class. And then the other side of the unit, at the beginning of the school year, we started with one of our intervention specialists who had more of a mild-moderate caseload. And then it had our ELL teacher as well. But that posed, after trying a few different things, the sound is kind of tough in a mobile unit. And so although it's a great space, to have two different learning... unit, and so although it's a great space, to have two different learning groups happening at one time, although they serve a small group, so their schedules are, you know, 20 to 30 minutes at a time, we did move one, we moved the intervention specialist at the holiday break back into the building. So, currently, the other side of the unit is for our ELL teacher. Because of that, we're kind of looking at those factors of serving our students with more moderate to intensive disabilities, and we have two classrooms currently, and then we brought a third into the building. So, looking at this upcoming school year, we are gonna look at maybe a larger classroom for that third class that services our students with moderate to intensive disabilities. Our three preschool classrooms, like Mrs. Serso said, there are certain proximities that they have to have, and so we have certain locations for those three classrooms so that they're near restrooms. And then we do have art and music in their own spaces, which has been very helpful this year. But the Media Center does have our guidance counselor, Title I, our intervention specialist that we have from Esser Funding, and then at, in January, we had more funding for Title I, so it also has a location for that teacher as well. So, currently, there are about four to five people sharing the Media Center space. At this time, everybody does have a location, but it is very tight, and there's not really any wiggle room. But the mobile unit did relieve that stressor for us by giving us a space for our gifted learners and then also for some of our small groups.
Any questions for Kaylee right now about current state at Chapman?
Is there a limit to how many mobile units you can use effectively?
In regards to how many we have or if like we would have another one on the property?
If we had another one, you know, it seems like you're getting, you're finding out there's challenges. It's not just as simple as saying, hey, let's put a modular unit there. If it's not ideal, I can have five units or I can have 100 units. It doesn't necessarily help. I'm trying to understand whether, whether we can plan to say, hey, at a certain point, we're not solving problems by adding mobile units, is, I guess what I'm trying to get a flavor for.
No, that's a great question, and I think there was a lot of trial and error as we brought the mobile unit and put different classrooms. We're really looking to put classrooms where students aren't receiving their full days of instruction, but that limits who can utilize the mobile unit. I do think they are a great space, so if you've ever been in one, it is the size of a full classroom. So, it actually for our, for Mrs. Nelson, who teaches gifted math, her classroom has been fantastic. Students have ample space, but it has posed the challenge when we have teachers that have maybe more of five to six students at a time. We thought that it would be great to be able to use another half and have both of them running at the same time. I think if there is a way to put up some kind of temporary divider or some way to divide the space, I think it would be a great way to help put some of our small group classes in a more ideal space versus vestibules and kind of dividing up our Media Center. But I think that that's just the next hurdle to kind of look to see how we can do that. Can we build more of like a temporary space if we're gonna use a mobile unit to serve small group classrooms? It's a very big space, so how can you make it a little bit smaller so that more than one teacher can use it at a time?
I don't know if it's non-intuitive or not, but have you thought about flipping it and saying, I want to put more like gifted math? I want to put more, not necessarily small groups, but a classroom in there that's not going to necessarily be noisy or what have you, whether it's, I don't know, reading or, or social studies or any other class?
So, I think that that would be a greater discussion for the board, the elementary principals, and Dr. Reiba. When we kind of developed who would utilize the mobile units last school year for this school year, we did decide it would be students that wouldn't be receiving a full day's instruction. And so, looking at who's currently out there, I don't have any more classes that would be able to go out there that would fit those current parameters.
Okay. I have a question about, you're describing, you know, making the space into smaller. There's currently a divider, right, between the gifted math and the other half, right?
So, they're, they're two separate units, so there is a divider and there's a door.
There's like a wall and a door.
But there, it's a full-size classroom on each side.
Okay, so you want to divide up the other side.
So, what would be most ideal if we're gonna utilize for small groups would be, can we take that mobile unit and section it off into smaller sections so that, for example, if, so Ms. Mayer, who teaches our English language learners, if she has a small group of six, but then we have an intervention specialist who might be working with three to four students, without some sort of division? We tried to create one. It wasn't something that was permanent, it was more with furniture. If there's not something to buffer out the sound, it echoes, be just the nature of the unit, and it was very distracting for not only our students but also our staff who are trying to provide instruction. And so, that was, that's the current barrier that we're trying to overcome with such a great space, but when you're utilizing it, which, with a small population, you're not able to maximize the space as much as we'd like to.
Thank you.
The other thing to consider is the mobile units we purchased, they do not have water and they don't have restrooms, so that's why you also want to look at it being a temporary, you know, the space. And if you take a look at the elementaries, there's only, besides the small group, the only full-class option is gifted math. That's not gonna be out there all day. So, stay up there, Kaylee.
Sure.
A couple other things as we kind of go through Chapman is, as we take a look at up, you know, projections for next year, we're not projecting any changes to total sections. When I say sections, that's how many third grades, how many fourth grades do we offer? Right now, we are projecting that we would add a fourth grade and reduce a third grade, and so that would stay even. The one thing that's in the green box at the bottom that I think is important for the board to understand, and Jenny has to deal with this as well as the principals, is sometimes it would be ideal to just look at, hey, we have three of every grade level except we've got this one section, this one grade level of two, and they're kind of close on the numbers, on the numbers we use as guidance. And so, when that two moves through from kindergarten to fifth grade, every year, you're taking away from one grade level and adding to another. That's not great for teachers, right? You need time to learn your content, to learn your grade level, and every year, we're moving people around. And so, if we had the space, we would be able to say, hey, Chat, I think this is a three and two, right? Chapman, we're just gonna keep you at three. We understand that one year, maybe you'll have 22 in a class instead of 28 in a class, and, and we're okay with that, because it's not advantageous to take a third-grade teacher and bump that third grade to first grade, because there's a retirement, or up to fourth grade. So, those are one of the, it doesn't come out on paper, but it's one of the challenges that does have an impact on teacher quality and student experience. So, wanted to point that out. Any questions on this one? And then considerations for next year, because there's no overall projections, we talked about, you know, there's not a need for a second mobile unit. We're not looking at any changes or recommending any changes for, for next school year at Chapman. Kaylee, anything else that you want to add or share?
The only thing that we'll be looking at is just maybe how to maximize the current second half of the mobile unit a little bit better for the upcoming school year, because we are gonna be just shifting probably one of our moderate to intensive classrooms to have a larger space for the upcoming year. So, internal movement, but not additional space needed.
So, one of the things I would say, as Kaylee and I had this conversation, is we can easily take the one full classroom and build walls to create smaller group learning spaces. My feedback was, we need to be sure what that is and that we like it. So, this has been kind of a trial air, or a trial year, because we don't want to put walls up and take walls down. So, that's something that's for the board to be aware of. We can easily do that. We just need to be sure, when we put that wall up, that's how it's gonna stay for as long as we have the mobile unit. Any other questions for Kaylee? Thank you, Kaylee.
Thank you.
Carter is somewhere in the building?
It's old Mr. Binkley.
He's just kept walking, kept walking. He's doing the dad lap. All right, Mr. Marconi, come on up. We want to talk Kinsner. So, at Kinsner, what was new for this year was we converted the stage into a music classroom, and as we heard, we did make the decision to consolidate half-day kindergarten to open up a classroom. And as the board knows, but just to reiterate for the public, we did that because as you, in our district, you, we typically only have enrollment enough for one half-day section. So, that means you either have an AM or PM. So, that means we allocate a classroom all day that's only used half a day, and we can't allocate that to other resources. So, I agree with all the concerns the parents shared. Wholeheartedly understand where they're coming from, but that was a part of the foundation for the, for the decision. Right now, art and music at Kinsner have their own classroom. Kinsner and Maraski are similar, they have additional art and music. What that means is, one, our teacher can't fulfill all the sections at the building, so we have other teachers that travel to do that, and they're having to share spaces. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Lou to share the reality of what it's like day-to-day in terms of space at Kinsner.
Thank you, Dr. Reiba. So, at Kinsner, we have a music classroom that is on the stage. We put up a wall, so that it's a, now a permanent space for our music teacher. We also have a art classroom, that's just a general art classroom. Outside of that, we have two encore teachers, we have a music and an additional music and additional art teacher. They currently share the Media Center space. Most of their classes takes, take place in there. One of the, the music teacher that is kind of floating, we can call her, she also uses the gym as a space. And additionally to that, our floating art teacher, she will push into the classrooms here and there, because the Media Center can kind of be a common space for librarian. We use it for music and art. We also use it for a little bit of orchestra and band. Right now, orchestra and band, the model when I, when I took over, they were in the atrium, which is not a good spot for orchestra and band. They're still currently there. We ordered some mobile tables for the Media Center, and the, the hope is that they should be arriving here at the end of February, and orchestra and band will then be in the Media Center full-time, which would be outstanding. But we've, we've used a lot of our side rooms. Our side rooms, which were previously like Makerspace areas, are now small service, small support service classrooms. We consolidated two teachers mid-year where they were, there was an opportunity to share a classroom, so we, we have moved them over to the, the same room, because we're just trying to buy as much space as we, as we can at Kinsner. It's a bit of a premium. So, that's our, our current reality. I think, any questions about our current state?
I have a couple. And this would be true for Maraski as well. How is it that we need extra music and art teachers but not extra gym teachers?
We have an extra gym teacher.
Oh, you do?
We do. I just didn't speak of a...
Okay.
He has a, he has a divide.
It's not a space-related issue?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, that, thank you. And then the other question I have is, how, how are you currently deciding which classes and students get the art or music in the classroom versus the one that's displaced into the Media Center? And is there an equitable allocation?
Yeah, so, it's based off of how the schedule was created. So, it was a schedule that I adopted when I, when I walked into it. So, right now, it's, it was about getting them out of the classroom as much as possible. We weren't able to do it for each one. I believe she pushes into two of the classrooms. So, it's one of those things where, as we're carving our schedule for the future, this is something we absolutely want to look at and make sure that all kids have an equitable education across the board.
And so, as we take a look at next year, we're not projecting any changes in terms of sections without half-day kindergarten at Kinsner next year, but you could see, we're adding two sections, reducing two others to even out, and goes without saying the things that I said earlier about Chapman. I'm not, I can't remember off the top of my head the exact numbers, but again, just moving staff around to, to make it work. And then, as we take a look at considerations for this upcoming school year, really what we want to think about is the discussion that was had at public comment. Do we continue with centralizing half-day kindergarten? Or do we offer a half-day kindergarten section at Kinsner next year? So, going back to the last slide, we said no changes, which means Lou already has all the, all the space filled up. So, Lou, I'll turn it back over to you. If half-day kindergarten comes back or other changes you're thinking of for next year, walk us through that.
Yeah, so, one of the pathways that we would have would be to displace our gifted teacher. Right now, she does have a classroom. She teaches two morning classes to grades four and five, and then she teaches an afternoon classroom to grade three. So, she does have a classroom space for that. What that would look like is her moving to the Media Center to teach all three of her classes. Band and orchestra can still go into the Media Center, they would just be in that gap that's in the middle of the day. So, the folding tables and chairs will be a big part of that. By doing that, you're gonna put music and art, the traveling music and art teacher fully on a cart, which obviously comes with its cons, just the bringing of materials, the quality of art, the quality of music, the spatial constraints. But essentially, what they would do is go back into the classroom, and you would have music, whoever, whatever classes they serve would be a push-in model.
Any questions for Mr. Marconi?
What would you do with a mobile unit?
What would we do if we, if we obtained a mobile unit?
If you need to think about it, you can email it back to us.
That's exactly, yeah. I'm a, I'm a processor, and I would need to think about how much space that would offer. I would consider that.
Have you visited the one at Chapman?
I have not, but I am from a school that did have a mobile unit.
And you love them and you can't wait to get one?
No. They weren't, people weren't jumping for joy, but they understood, so.
The one challenge with Kinsner is location.
Yeah.
Location and access, where the rest of the buildings have, you know, have that, that problem doesn't exist, but that's, that's, I mean, it's a, it's a real challenge to take a look at, you know, where, and then how do we get kids there in an easy fashion?
That's right.
But yeah, if you, if you could process it, think about it...
I'd be happy to put some, yeah, I'd be happy to put some thought into it.
And then funnel the answer back to Cameron.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lou? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will go back to, or go to Maraski, and so, we didn't do anything new at Maraski for this year. Mike had to, to keep a lid on the growing enrollment there with, with the space that he had available. And then, so, I'll let you, Mike, go ahead and, and share, you know, some of the art and music things that you've done.
Absolutely. So, I, I heard Kaylee say this earlier, the important thing is wiggle room. And at Maraski right now, we have no wiggle room whatsoever. Just to highlight some of the things that are on the slide here is, we have gotten collaborative with our encore teachers, where we've created a fine arts room, what, what once was a full-time art room, it's turned into a fine arts room right now, where we have a schedule where two days a week, our music teacher will take that room, and that's the one that is permanent at Maraski. And then another two days a week, our art teacher will take that room. And then they have kind of a rotating schedule based on needs and projects going on in the classroom, where they'll alternate, or alternate who gets the third day. Our traveling art teacher, who comes to us one week out of every three, she sets up in the, in the Media Center, and she teaches art out of the Media Center for a full week out of every three on our red, white, and blue schedule. And then our traveling music teacher, she does travel daily. So, she's there at a weekend at a time. She will go to classrooms and teach music out of classrooms. Mrs. Bissel, you talked about our physical education teachers. When we do have double gym going on or double physical, physical education, both PE teachers combine their classes, so we have upwards of 50 to 55 students who are going through their PE class in our gym, and we have the luxury of having an incredible gym at Maraski where we can fit. It's tight at times, but they do make it work, and they're extremely collaborative with one another and really make it a good experience for our students. In terms of other adjustments that we've made over the last two years, although that says no changes, we have had to take the new principal office that was created five or six years ago and turn that into our gifted classroom, which displaced our administrative staff, myself, our part-time assistant principal, to where we went and took the old office area. And then all of our related services, our IS, as intervention specialists, are working in what used to be our Makerspace. And then any nook and cranny you look at our building is being used for small group instruction. And the one thing that I don't think has been mentioned yet that I think is extremely important for our elementary students is teaching the whole child. So, with the importance of social-emotional learning and the wraparound and related services that we provide students, you need space to be able to provide counseling services. We have phenomenal mentors, one of, which is sitting right at the, at the table there, who come into our building weekly and need a space to work with kids. who come into our building weekly and need a space to work with kids. We have picnic tables set up in our atrium so that can happen. And that's not ideal space when you want to have a one-on-one conversation and sometimes talk about hard things with students and kind of counsel them and coach them on their social, emotional learning needs. We've created a John Safe space, and that was an awesome resource to have in our school. But also, that cuts down on another space that we have in our building. We felt that, that the benefits of adding that space outweighed the negatives of creating. Mr. Lawrence went into a book room, so he has a really tiny office now so we could create that safe space. But again, our title services are in offices or, in some cases, vestibules, where we got surplus money and added two additional title teachers. They are now working in a kind of a, a little vestibule within our school. She's made it her own. We make it work, and it allows us to really service the whole child and, and really meet individual student needs. So again, wiggle room is the key word where we have none at Maraski, including our orchestra and band who are servicing students on the stage. Because we have a beautiful stage that we want to be using for performances, we haven't turned that into a classroom as Kinsner has, but we still use that for our band and orchestra where they, they are there for an hour and a half every day, providing students with our arts education.
Any questions on the reality of Maraski this year? All right. So as we take a look at next year, we are projecting that Mike would have one less section at Maraski than he does this year. Again, we would be looking to add a first grade section and reduce a second and fourth. However, that's with an asterisk that we are keeping an eye on full-day kindergarten because we're slightly over the 50 mark right now, possibly needing a third full-day kindergarten. And that fourth grade that's on, on the block to possibly reduce a section is close to maybe needing to remain where it is. And so with that, one of the things that we need to talk about considerations for next year is a mobile unit at Maraski. And Mike, I'll let you kind of share, I know we've got some notes there, but share kind of what you would see as the benefit as a mobile unit.
Yeah. Just back on the previous slide, I think what, what Cameron highlighted earlier as far as the green box of the, the changes in dynamics year after year, Maraski's a great example of that. So for instance, we have three first grades this year. That's marked for four first grades next year, which means each year that's gonna go three second grades. That's a bubble number for us. And as Cameron shared, full-day kindergartner is on watch as well as fourth grade. But that's kind of an example of those challenges of the group that's going to, to fourth grade the next year is gonna require four teachers. So even if we did go down to three, the very next year, we would have to go back up to four just because of numbers, as long as projections stay what they are. So I think that's a, a great place to highlight. And then, as we look at a mobile unit, we've looked at a couple of things. And I think what that does for us right now, although we projected to go down a section, I think it gives us some space and some relief when we talk about our related services. When we talk about potentially being more consistent in how we equitably serve the arts, if we wanted to move a, a art class out there or a music class out there. And then in terms of our gifted class, I do think that gifted could go out to a nicer, bigger space instead of what I was using as an office and open that up for, for alternative programming, whatever that is, so.
Any questions for Mike on anything related to Maraski at this time?
Just where would, where would you place the mobile unit at, at Maraski?
I think that's a, a bigger discussion than just me, but I think we have so much green space at Maraski that there's some ideal locations. What makes sense to me, like off the top, and this is just me thinking about it now, would be right off the backside of our atrium, really close to where our pavilion currently is. We have, do, do have nice kind of level, and I don't know the logistics of, of installing a trailer, but I think Maraski is one place that actually has some, some locations where a trailer could fit.
And you have a lot of exits and sidewalks that are already in place that can make access easy and close, yeah?
Yeah, there's a sidewalk that leads right out to the neighborhood behind that connects our pavilion and could potentially be connected to a, a mobile unit.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
And that would be, come on up, Greg. I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Lawrence, who's here, who's a big part of all the logistics and management and, and supporting it, you know. So he, as, as we've heard, he works and supports Kinsner and Maraski as well. So just want to say thank you for being here and the work that you're doing to support the buildings as well. So in his illustrious two-month career with Strongsville, we've got him on the spot here to share. And so, you know, Greg and I have had many conversations about this, and he's already seen firsthand the challenges we have at Surar. So Surar is another one of those buildings that we didn't have half-day kindergarten at this year to open up a classroom. And as we talked about before, it's the second of our two buildings at the elementaries that support students with moderate intensive needs. And then Greg, I'll let you give some highlights of, of some of the challenges you're facing in the rest of the building.
Yeah, thank you. Just like everybody else has said, Surar is, is packed. There, there is no, no room. Three of our, three of our classroom supports are, are MI students. While art and music have their, have their own classrooms, they're, the spaces are all, are all used to, during lunches and, and other things. There's just no open spaces. Our media center, a few years, few years back, space was taken from the media center to add three office areas, one for our school counselor, one for an intervention specialist, and one for a reading teacher. This past year, more space was taken from the media center with just bookcases to fit the gifted math. So really, the media center has gone from a space where kids can come and work and be collaborative to, there's, there's no space for people to move. And in addition, we have four other desks where people work, a, a technology person, an intervention specialist meets with, meets with kids in there, and some other, some other aides are there. With, with the MI students, space is needed for that, for that program, not just, not just classrooms, but other ancillary things, like, like a sensory room. And that's something we're looking at now. Where can we, where can we put a space to help the students with their, with their daily, daily activities? Unfortunately, we do not have, we do not have spaces large enough to make it a worthwhile, worthwhile space. We, we use, we use the term glass houses because a lot of our interventions and our small group work happens in the vestibules at our entrances and, and exits. So there's the locked door, and then a little space, and then another, another glass door to, to get in. So we have desks, we have tables, our EL teachers is there. When we have small group testing, we need to find spaces, we use those, those glass houses. So we do not, we just do not have space for any, really, anything. I don't, I don't know an eloquent way to put it, other than I've, I've, I'm just amazed at how the staff adapts to, to the space issues.
Questions for Greg on the current situation at Surar?
Where, where else have you been a principal?
The last time I was principal was Albion Elementary in North Royalton. Before that was Eastview Elementary in Avon Lake. Before that was Shiloh Middle School in Parma.
How does theirs, granted, there's a change in time, but how do their space issues compare to ours? And is there anything for us as a board to learn from it?
I, I think probably Albion is, is very, very similar to, to this. You utilize every, every space. And I, I think what, and Mike may have said it, when you, when you look at space issues, it's more than just can we cram another section into a, into a, a building? Or can we find a space for kids to work? You, you have to look at, how do we want to educate kids today? Which is much different than certainly how I was educated a long time ago. Not so much these young kids who I'm working with. I never felt older until I started working here with, with these folks. There is no room for collaborative learning to happen, for, for group work, for problem-solving work. I walk down the hallways and kids are on the, you know, laying and sitting on the floor, working together in partnership because there's no room in the, in the building for that. And that's what I experienced in North Royalton at Albion. The same thing happened. We did not have spaces for the, if the fifth grade wants to get together and do an activity, there's no way for the fifth grade to get together and do an activity. The gym's being used all day. If it's not, if it's not being used for physical education, it's being used for, for lunch. So when we talk about spaces, it's just not can we fit one more in? It's can we educate the way we want to educate? And that's what we ran into in, in Royalton. So I would say that's probably the most similar.
Thank you.
And we ended up building a new elementary school, so.
I didn't pay you for that softball. But thank you.
So with all of that, we are projecting an increase of, of a section at Surar next year with the addition of the first grade, with a first grade classroom. And that's not even considering a half-day kindergarten there. So taking into consideration everything that was just said, plus we've got to find space for one more classroom at Surar next year. So one of the considerations, or the considerations that we have to have for Surar is a mobile unit, and then I've qualified this as a must-have. It's a must-have for Surar next year. And we've also got to decide what we want to do with half-day kindergarten. And so Greg, talk a little bit. I know, I know you've kind of sketched some, some thoughts down. If half-day kindergarten would come back to Surar next year, what do you, what does that mean since you're already out of space?
Yeah. So putting, putting the, adding the first grade next year will necessitate either a mobile unit to put, it would have to be a full classroom. To, to just say, we're gonna put reading intervention or counselor's office out there does not free up a classroom. We need a classroom. So that would mean art or music could go into the, into the mobile unit. Again, as, as was talked before, we don't want to put people there who are, or kids there who are there all day. So this would be, you know, if you put music there for, for their various times. To then add half-day K on, again, you need now another, another classroom freed up. So that would mean if you're gonna put art in the mobile unit, you're gonna have music on, on wheels. It sounds like a simple solution, but as I'm saying it, I'm thinking, where are we going to store all the equipment and the new ukuleles that were just approved that have to go? Because in, really in my mind, I'm sitting here going, wow, this is, where are we gonna put this? And, and I just thought of this, what a great interview question for the next principal as to how are you gonna solve this issue? But those, those are the considerations. One mobile unit, I would say absolutely is a must. With, with half-day K, you'd probably be hard-pressed not to have a discussion. Would you need more?
So you said art or music? Can you put both of them out?
I don't see, if you're gonna put music, just like the, the discussion about the, the noise in, in a, in a mobile unit, if you put music out there, you'd be hard-pressed to put anything else with it. If you had two separate units, one here and one there, you could put both in there, yes.
So if we could solve the, the, the sound issue?
Exactly.
We could, we could consider putting both of them out there?
Yes.
Except art requires a sink.
Yeah.
We'll learn what a chamber pot is. I know, I know some, I, and, and those of you who, those of you who reacted that way, I know, I know you know what a chamber pot is. I have no other questions.
I have a comment unrelated to that and a question. The comment is this, I just wanted to point this out, is being involved in the PTA, especially at Surar, one of the things that we haven't discussed yet is the fact that there are other activities that go on in our elementary buildings throughout the year, things like book fair, holiday shop, that are really critical events for our kids' educational and elementary experience. And those take space, too. Like for Surar, we took over the music room for both of those. So like, those are considerations, too. If we bump music, we're also bumping these other things as well. And it's like PTA, we meet at the library now because we can't even meet in, in the building. So it's, there are other parts, too, that I know I'm thinking about as we're having these discussions. The question that I have, and it's not necessarily, anyone can answer it, but can someone walk me through what a half-day kindergarten schedule might look like? Like, how long is it? How long are they spending in one space? Like, are they going to art or are they going to mu, like, what does that look like?
One of our principals wants to come up that has half-day kindergarten and share that?
Sure. The, the half-day kindergarten day looks like about, about two and a half hours. Specials, they do leave for encore. The encore periods are about 25 minutes for everybody. So, so they, they follow red, white, and blue schedules just like everybody else, but they have a condensed special because of instructional time. And then the rest of their, their time is, is either, we do provide intervention for those students, so targeted intervention. As you, you can imagine, some of our half-day kindergartners with the, the limited time and instruction do have some, some needs for targeted intervention as well. So that's a portion of their day, and then, then also you're fitting in your, your regular curriculum, so your ELA, math, science, and social studies. And, and we're typically trying to embed the science and social studies into literacy through reading and writing connected to science and social studies. Does that give you enough?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. So last on the list is Whitney. Whitney, we didn't implement any changes for this year. They are in a pretty good spot. They've, you know, they've got art and music in their own classrooms. They have converted the media center like everybody else to have some additional small group spaces. They are using, as everybody talked about, vestibules or different areas for support, for intervention. They've got additional title services as well, right, just recently? So they're looking at additional space for that. So in terms of overall classrooms, they're in a good spot. Related services supports for kids, similar, similar challenges that are there for everybody else. So based on, next year, we're not projecting any changes to sections, so we would stay the course with them. And so in terms of considerations per building, there's no changes projected, but the board may want to consider a mobile unit for Whitney to account for the current space challenges, as I said, for those support services, to accommodate future growth. And if you're, if we're gonna say, hey, we'll talk about here in a minute, there is pricing for multiple mobile units. If you want to take advantage of that pricing and just proactively have that taken care of, that's something you can consider for, for Whitney as well. Any questions on Whitney? So before I go on, a couple more slides, I want to talk about pricing and then, and get down to the, the piece where we, we want to have some guidance from the board. We're talking about these things in a very casual way, right? As, hey, here's what's happening, here's what we're doing, we're, we're using every space. And Greg leaned into the conversation a little bit, but I, I, I want everybody to know the seriousness of the situation we have going on at our elementary schools. And, you know, we talk about in, in financial terms, and George, I may get the pathway wrong, but if your finances, finances aren't in a good spot, it's fiscal watch, and then fiscal caution, and then fiscal emergency, right? That's kind of the pathway. Flip 'em?
Fiscal caution, then fiscal...
Fiscal caution, fiscal watch, and then fiscal emergency. I would qualify this as we are in an educational emergency. We are doing the best we possibly can. We still continue to get very good results, but as we take a look at the complexity of educational needs that our students have today, we are not serving them to the level that we feel comfortable with or we know we need to based on space issues. If anybody in this community is okay saying, students should get reading intervention between two exit doors, then that's a challenge. And that's something that as a community, we should not be okay with. We should not stand for that, and we should not say that's equitable and accessible and what our students need in 2024 and beyond. So we will continue to do everything we can in the short term to bridge us to the long-term solution, which is the facilities plan that the board endorsed a few months ago. And I respect the decision that we have to take care of our operating funds through the renewal levy, but every month, every week, every day, every year, we wait puts ourselves further in an educational emergency to meet the needs of our students that will only continue to expound and continue to, to...
Exacerbate.
Exacerbate, thank you, Rich. The, the issues that we have and, and continue to not provide the early interventions and supports in the manner needed so that our students can get what they need early on and be successful as they go to upper elementary, middle school, and high school. So these decisions should not be looked at in the silo of, do we have mobile units? Do we have consolidated kindergarten? But the longer we go down these pathways and have these conversations is a detriment to our children and their future. So as we take a look at that piece of the puzzle, we do have to make short-term decisions. And those short-term decisions that we have to make right now or talk about are mobile units. So one of the things that I wanted to share with you is just a, a pricing breakdown that we have. So Mr. Brechner is here, he can give you the details because he did this work and did great work to get the best pricing... work, and did great work to get the best pricing for us. The way mobile units are priced are by unit, and based on the, the work Steve was able to do, there's a pricing if you get one unit, and then there's a pricing if you get two or more units, and it's charged as like a monthly rental fee, you could think of it that. So, the first column says, here, if we buy one unit, it's going to be a little over $3,000 a month. Per year, it's almost $37,000. The lease, we typically get these for are a four-year lease. So for one unit, the total cost just to have that on property for all four years is roughly $148,000 for that one unit. If you get two or more units, there's a, a little bit of a price reduction. And as you could see, all of those are per unit, just remember as you read those. So what would have been a total of $148,000 per unit is now $131,000 per unit if you get two or more. There are some, in the blue table, some one-time costs. So the one-time costs are delivery and installation. That is, the company says, here's how much it's going to cost for us to bring it on property, and set it on the foundation, and, and, you know, put it in place. And that cost is, again, by unit there, and you could see that. And then there's other stuff that we've got to do. We've got to have an architect do the work to, to do the drawings. We've got to get the permits from the city. We've got to do electrical hookups. And you could see, it's either $20,000 for one, or we would project, these are projections, but $15,000 per, per unit there. So, if you take a look at kind of the compilation slide here, putting this all together, and this kind of goes in the order of my recommendation to the board, if you are saying, let's just get one unit, we've got the unit at Chapman, let's get one unit at SRR next year, if you take the 48-month cost, plus the one-time cost, that says that it's $192,000 to put, over four years, to put that mobile unit at SRR. If we go with two units, I'm recommending that would be Maraski and SRR. You could see that that total cost would be 330, roughly 339,000. If we do all three units, Maraski, SRR, and Whitney, that would get you to the total of 508,000. I didn't put four units on there, but if the board wants to entertain four units, we have real concerns we would have to address, and really think through Kinsner. But, we could just add on, the, the pricing is there, and we could take a, a look at what that would be. If my ballpark math is correct, you're probably around $670,000 for all four units on the property. So with that, where we need some board considerations and guidance, is Chapman, where we're, good is not the right word, but the status quo for next year. Kinsner, we talked about, Mr. Marconi shared, the, what would have to happen to, to bring half-day kindergarten there. So the guidance we need from the board is, do we want to continue to consolidate? And that means Kinsner families that want half-day kindergarten would have to go to Chapman or Maraski, or do we offer to Kinsner, and we know the positive and negative consequences of that decision? Maraski, you know, a mobile unit, do we want to have a mobile unit? I've qualified that as we should have it. SRR is, mobile unit is a must-have, and we also have to have the same conversation about half-day kindergarten for them. And then Whitney, I qualified the mobile unit as a nice-to-have. And, should we purchase that? So, Mr. Mikkol, this is something that, as we've learned from last year, we, we, we learned a lot last year when we placed our first mobile unit at Chapman. You know, the sooner we can have guidance, the sooner we can communicate, the sooner building principals can plan. So, I'll turn it over to you for discussion, so we can work towards some guidance from the board.
Is anyone burning to start off?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
One, the first is, I assume you don't need direction today. So when do you need direction, by firm direction, in terms of purchasing more units?
I would like direction today.
Oh, boy. Okay. Well, then I have too many questions for that.
So I would like direction today, but that's, that's up to Mr. Mikkol to determine that. What I, we, we've got, you know, a meeting in two weeks. The, the longer we delay, the more challenging we have for the mobile units. We've got to get architectural plans. We want to have, we were a little delayed this year at Chapman because of the learning curve. We don't want that to happen. We are also starting, or half, kindergarten registration continues for a few more weeks. So, you know, as a courtesy to our parents, we would want to know that, because we have parents that are waiting to say, hey, if half-day is offered, I'm going to give up my full-day spot and go to half-day. That messes with our numbers and our projections, so timing is of the essence.
So, do you...
I can hold or, or go, whatever you prefer.
So one of the, if we can, with the courtesy of the board, I kind of want to discuss half-day kindergarten. And in my mind, I don't, in my mind, I want to be customer-service friendly. I would like, I would like to offer half-day kindergarten at each location, and let, and let parents make the decision. On the other side, being the efficiency kind of guy that I am, I don't want to offer half-day kindergarten at Kinsner to find out there's only four families that want half-day kindergarten. But how do you, how do you find that stuff out, is the challenge? But, taking it, taking it back even a further step, the reason we stopped offering half-day kindergarten at Kinsner and at...
SRR.
SRR, is because of the space consideration. So, I guess for me, the first question is, to say out loud, we want to offer it, is that even a reasonable thing? Or is it off the table because the dominoes will fall, and now we're, we're not educating kids in, in hallways, we're educating kids in the boiler room?
What I would say is, there's one thing that we have to take into consideration that hasn't been discussed yet with half-day kindergarten, and that is, half-day kindergarten at SRR in consideration of, it houses our students with modern intensive needs. So what that means, and, and Andy and Megan, if you have specific questions, they can give you more of the details. But sometimes we need a continuum of services, and sometimes as we take a look at our preschoolers coming up to kindergarten, full-day kindergarten is not the, the recommended environment that we would have for our, some of our students, as well as if you take a look at some of our students that receive additional related services, ABA, speech, OT, PT, those things, it becomes challenging at times to meet that related service schedule, and get core instruction in a full-day kindergarten setting. So, a half-day option provides a full continuum. We were able to make do with it this year, but that's something that they've both shared with me, that is, is going to be a challenge if we continue to not have half-day kindergarten at, at SRR. So, at SRR specifically, it becomes of, yes, there's a space issue, but there's a student need issue to access those services. And then if we take a look at that piece of the puzzle, it comes down to one building not having it, which poses its own challenges.
But going back to the original question, if we would just say we're going to have half-day kindergarten at each school, are we potentially putting ourselves in a position of saying, hey, we said we want to do it, but we can't make all the cubes fit?
I have a question that relates to this. And I don't want to say it out loud, because I don't like it, but it has to be asked. Can we put half-day kindergarten in a mobile unit? If we're talking about two hours of instruction, in the classroom, it's not in an encore, can we do it?
Anybody have a thought? Mr. Marconi, looks like you have a, I don't want to put you out of spot.
I, I think of, of all of our services, when you look at all classes in general, half-day kindergarten is the next one that could potentially work. I think some of the questions that have to be answered by us and the board is, some of the safety concerns that you have with kids not being in the building, you have restroom needs. And, and I, I think that time-wise, you are going to come into the building to do some of your related services, your encore things. But I do think that that bathroom needs, and some of the safety concerns of a student walking down and having to come in the building, poses its own, or its own, like, challenge. But as far as time goes, I do think that time for half-day kindergartners makes more sense than putting, say, a first grade or third grade out there, because of, they're just, then they'd be out there all day.
I, I, on second, like you're saying...
For the record, can we put you guys on the spot and have you talk?
Yeah. Can you, no, I think we got it, but if we're going to continue the conversation, let's do it on the microphone.
I think with half-day K, it would be a little bit of a challenge, though, because, as Mike was talking about, the restroom thing, we're talking little bodies here. And I can tell you that my kindergarten teachers, they have bathrooms in their classroom, and it's, it's an outstanding thing to have. So to have that separate would be a bit of a challenge. I think when I, when I'm thinking about the portable, first thoughts that come to mind would be your encore teachers and your gifted, because gifted is, you're looking at third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and you're looking at about 60 minutes. It's something that you can do there, and then you can kind of head back. There's more, it's just a, a shorter window of time, so.
Do we have a morning and an afternoon need for half-day kindergarten at Kinsner and SRR?
Typically, we haven't. There's been few outlier years, but when it's been in all buildings, it's been either at AM or PM, and then that's dependent on transportation, determines that schedule of who has AM, who has PM, so.
So it would just be one of those at both buildings?
Yeah. So if we would go back, right now, we have, we have AM and PM at all three of the buildings that have it. If we would go back to having it in the, in their home buildings, typically that was just, you had at one section of half-day, so either AM or PM. We have had those outlier years where a building had both AM and PM, but that, those were rare. And so, to answer your question, Rich, if we say half-day kindergarten comes back, yes, it can be done. The, it could be done at Kinsner with putting gifted in the media center, and having music or art in the classroom. It could be done at, at SRR by having to take a look at art or mu, art and music would be on a card at that time. Or you would put one of them in the mobile unit, because those are two classrooms. A first grade would go in one, half-day kindergarten would go in the other. And so it can be done, but you're displacing somebody to do it.
Random question. I know we said that Mr. Lawrence was already in some sort of book closet, whatnot. What if we make the mobile units some sort of administrative area? Can we utilize any current existing administrative areas and create those in the classrooms, or what's needed for the kids, and move the adults to mobile areas, so they can escort themselves to the bathroom?
You could, but the question is, what space does it free up in the building that is needed? And that's kind of, I think, what Mr. Gurkha was saying, is that you could do that, and that would offer some small group space, but it wouldn't free up the space for a half-day kindergarten.
And I've been in Mr. Lawrence's office, and you can't fit more than two bodies in that office.
I was particularly thinking about his book closet.
Yeah, no, no. I only went there once.
I just have a comment to the half-day kindergarten. I'm going to have a really hard time justifying units, which we need and must have, but while having those, but still displacing our kindergarten students. For me, that's going to be a really tough
Sure.
decision to make, and say, even with this extra space, we still can't bring your kindergartners home. That's, that's really hard to say. So I feel like if we're going to have units at these buildings, we also need to have kindergarten at these buildings.
Yeah, that I'm comfortable with. I just didn't want to say, what I didn't want to do is put us in a position of saying, make it so, and then, well, we physically...
Well, it's going to be ugly, but we're going to...
It'll be manageable. All, all things are manageable. We had a, we had a mile-high, mile-high, extra mile award winner?
Maybe mile-high.
Who, who, who Megan says smiles no matter how, how awful it is. I'm paraphrasing.
It's the extra mile award, just to...
I'm, I'm comfortable that we need to, that we need to add the mobile units. What I'm, the, the mechanics of the question that I'm at is, can we go, you know, can we go to the companies and say, we're going to commit to four, or whatever that number is? And we want, in my, in my language, we control the releases. So we get the pricing by saying, we want them, but I want two this year, and I want two next year. But I'm committing to buying them. And I think we still can get some financial advantage, and maybe manage it. But, I don't know if right this moment is the time or not, but I want us to consider changing the conversation, and thinking about this as a three-year plan. And we're not going to come up with a three-year plan today, but none of, none of the issues that we're grappling with are going to change. They're just going to continue all the time. So I think we need to have a, a quick, short-term plan. But I think, you know, similar to our calendar, our academic calendar, it would be beneficial for the board, it would be beneficial for the admin team to say, as soon as we decide what we're going to do next year, we should continue the conversation and decide, we already have the projections, they've been good enough for us to do planning, and say, what are we going to do for the next two or three years? Does that resonate, or is that not helping?
I don't understand why three. This cost is for four, yes?
No, the cost is for, as long as you have two, you get the price break.
It's for four years.
It's for four years, correct.
That's what I'm saying. So we already have four, why three?
You lost me.
I think what Rich is saying is, talk to the mobile unit company, say, hey, we want two mobile units this year. We will commit to the third, but we don't want that to the following year, but we want to get the price, the group price.
Yeah, I get that, but I just don't understand the request for a three-year plan. Like, why three? It seems random. For, we already have...
I like three. I always like three. Whether it's, whether it's four-year plan, a two-year plan, I, I would defer to whatever horizon we want to look at. But what, what I'm trying to do is say, we're, the, the goal is the, the elementary facilities plan.
Right.
But we need something in the middle, because we're, even if, even if we pass that tomorrow, it's going to take three, three years to get there.
Yeah.
I just want to tell you that the pricing is for four, and I can have whatever conversation I'm directed to have, obviously, but I don't know if that price holds, if it goes to a three-year lease, two-year lease. So you may see an increase in monthly costs if we decrease the amount of years. Again, I'll have whatever conversation.
The, the, the three years is just a discussion about planning. It's not a discussion about how long we should lease, how long we should lease trailers for. The four years is the standard lease, four years is the standard lease, and I don't, I don't see us needing to get rid of them, you know, in, in two years, right? I'm just saying, instead, I'm, I'm suggesting, instead of talking about this, this is, we're talking about next school year. I want, I think it would be, and I'm asking, would it be helpful to expand the conversation and say, let's plan two years, the same way we plan a calendar, a school calendar, et cetera? Or three years, or whatever?
I think what I'm thinking, Mr. Mikkol, and just processing as you're talking, is, I don't know what else year two or three would be different than this year. And what I mean by that is, what are viable options to address our space constraints? These are them. That's a really great sentence, right? But, you know, the mobile units, the, what do we do with kindergarten? We've got more kids that are coming every year. I, I don't know what would look different in year two versus year three. That's what I'm kind of trying to process right now.
Could it be adding more? Well, like, Chapman having to have a second mobile unit, or Maraski having to have a second?
That's what I'm, I'm saying is, instead of doing it year after year, oh, we, you know, now we've crossed this threshold, now we've crossed this threshold, now, et cetera. I think it makes sense in, whether it's a three-year look, or whatever, it's just not doing it year after year, and starting to look now at, what do we do with this building?
I guess what...
Is that an option?
Yeah, we, remember, we discussed that last year, and this building really is not an option. But, the, I guess the one part that we'd have, if, looking at what you're talking about, is, is there a consideration from the board to have classrooms out there all day? You know, is there a considerate, because that, that's the part, like, you'd, if we're going to do a multi-year plan, there's not enough flexibility within what we offer at the elementary level to put anything else out there, rather than gifted, or encore, or small group. So, the discussion would have to go to kind of what Kaylee mentioned, is, are we willing to say, a third through fifth grade could go out, and their classroom would be in a mobile unit? If that is parameters, then I think we can have more of a multi-year discussion. If it is, we don't want kids out there all day, we want it to be shorter blocks of time... blocks of time, that I think more mobile units are not going to solve that problem.
I think with one exception, the one that we could move is music, if we don't put anything on the other side. So that would be the last one that we could functionally move, knowing we're committing an entire unit to one, one thing. So I think the maximum you could do, given the current parameters, is two units per building, because they all have the same music constraints.
Yeah.
Kind of in the same vein, but if I had to make a decision right now about what I would envision, and in keeping in mind more of the equity issue, and that most of the buildings are in the same situation, this doesn't resolve Surar's issue, however. I would put one at every building, and so we need to know if Kinsner can take one. I would put one at every building, I would put gifted math in half of it at every building, and divide the other half up into small group spaces for whatever interventions are currently between the doorways at given buildings. And I would want to know, how many do we think we can get out of that? That's one of the questions I had, like, what does Kaylee envision if we were going to build walls, and and build that same model at all five buildings? So we're all starting with the same playing field. We're going to say, all of our gifted math across the whole district is in a mobile unit. You know, the vast majority of all of our intervention is in a mobile unit, and that's our starting place, and everything else works around. Do we have to lose an art because we have an extra kindergarten? Well, that's what we have to do this year. But those are non-negotiables. That's where we start. And then the further conversation would, the only further conversation in terms of mobile unit would be, do we want another one for music and the PTA meeting? You know, whatever we could actually fit around the music classes, that would be the only second consideration under the current constraints. Obviously, that's without any attention to the financial piece of it, but if just, like, ideal, that's what I would do.
And I don't, I don't have anything to disagree with, but that's the kind of thought process, and I'm balancing, you need marching orders.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I think if-
But-
We'll go on, Mr. Gurkha.
I don't have any preconceived notions. I mean, there's not, you know, I don't have any absolutely nots. I look to the people who actually have to go into the trailers for the entire school year to say, you know, what what are the consequences of, you know, just cavalierly saying, hey, let's do, let's do half-day kindergarten in the thing. Well, it solves our problem, move on. Well, no, it actually just creates new problems. So that's the part where I kind of want the team to bring us the solutions, so that we can then say, this is, you know, if it's a menu, you know, solution A gives us this this benefit at this price, solution B gives us this benefit at this price, and then we can prioritize.
Okay. Does that resonate?
I agree, because they're doing it every single day, they're living it, we're just hearing it and seeing it, and you guys know what's possible. You guys are the heads of it that are, we trust to lead us in the right direction in terms of what you see day-to-day and the feedback you get.
I felt like we, like, I mean, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I felt like we got that, like Cameron's saying, under ideal circumstances, he would take three. I think that's what he just told us. Am I wrong?
Correct, yeah.
So we we have that. And my only addition was, do four. If Kinsner can take it, do the fourth. I don't, I feel like they they answered, for me at least, they answered that. They said, we we cannot continue under the current circumstances.
Yeah, that that I don't think any of us disagree with. It's just a matter of how fast and how many.
So just to, so I'm all, we're all clear, since we're all in the room together. We will move forward with the plan that half-day kindergarten, going on Ms. Bissell's comment, if we're going to put mobile units, we should have full offerings at the building, the challenges we have at Surar. I will come back to the board to say, with one mobile unit, we'll take a look, Lou and I will work on, and Steve on Kinsner, to see, we will give you an option, and determine whether that option is feasible or not. Of that, gifted math, all support services that we could think are, we can fit in the mobile unit, and then what does that mean in the building, and what what less-than-ideal situation still exists even with that? And then if we add a second one, what would that scenario be? To the team here, does that make sense? Any clarifying questions for you? All right, and so we'll have that for you next meeting?
You'll have that for us before next meeting, so we can make a decision at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Is that-
Yeah, yeah. They said they don't want to go home tonight. It's already so late. They're continuing work.
But no, I mean, not to, not to talk in circles, but it's easy to say, let's put a, let's put a mobile unit at Kinsner, and let's and let's have a section of half-day kindergarten. But then we find out we can't put a mobile unit at Kinsner, and now we're, you know, I just want to collapse our choices down and make sure that whatever decisions we make, we can actually do.
No, we'll have it for you.
Okay.
I live by Kinsner, you can use my driveway.
Problem solved. I'm ready to vote.
I volunteer my driveway, my backyard, wherever you want to put it. Ukulele practice, it's fine.
Anything else on this discussion?
Not for me.
I appreciate the time. Thank you to our principals for being here. Have a great rest of your night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Next on my agenda, we do have a resolution, be resolved upon my recommendation, that grade three Ohio State tests in English, Language Arts, and Math be administered in paper format for the 24-25 school year pursuant to Ohio Revised Code as amended in Senate Bill 216, as stated in the exhibit. So we have a choice every year for third grade. Aaron works with the teachers to determine the recommendation, and so this is, the board has to officially approve it, so that's this recommendation for you.
Will the recommendation ever change?
It's not. Are you going to miss the third-grade teachers?
You're done.
The second thing we have is just an annual approval for our OHSAA membership, so be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association be authorized for the 24-25 school year. Membership requires Strongsville City Schools conduct their athletic programs in accordance with the Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, Business Rules, Interpretations, and Rulings of OHSAA. Any questions on that? All right, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brechner.
All right, there's a couple gifts that need to be recognized tonight, so be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the following gifts be approved. The Strongsville Community Theater donated $1,000 to the Strongsville High School Spring Musical. Jan Brostek of Pins and Needles Quilt Shop donated a used sewing machine to the Makerspace at Strongsville High School. And lastly, the Strongsville Fire Department donated four boxes of disposable gowns, 20 washable gowns, to the Curriculum Department, and 12 boxes of disposable gloves to the Food Services Department.
Any questions for Steve? All right, next, we'll bring up Aaron for the curriculum part.
All right, tonight, I have five items for your consideration. First item is an overnight trip, and this is for Strongsville DECA. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that permission be granted to Strongsville DECA Distributive Education Clubs of America to travel to Columbus to participate in the Ohio DECA Career Development Conference, March 8th and 9th, 2024. Expenses will be paid by participating students fundraising and career tech funds. And then from there, students who qualify for nationals will be able, or would be able to attend. It's in Anaheim, California, April 27th through May 1st, 2024. And just a comment that we did have 55 of our students that qualified for the state competition, so outstanding as usual. The second item is Advanced Placement Program Educational Testing. Be it resolved upon the recommendation that Strongsville City School District pays approximately $101,850 for the advanced placement testing, that the costs are reimbursed by participating students. So whenever any of our high school or, I guess, my high school students take an AP course, they also take the associated tests. If you do the math, it's roughly almost 1,100 tests that our students are taking in these AP courses this year. Item three is our Strongsville High School Program of Studies that Mr. Gurkha referenced at the start of the meeting. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Strongsville High School Program of Studies for the 24-25 school year be approved. We have just recently completed our scheduling at the high school. Just a couple notes of interest, we have a new course next year entitled U.S. Military History at the high school. It's a semester-long course. We've moved our AP Human Geography course from a sophomore class to a freshman class, so that'll be exciting for our incoming freshmen, and a handful of other electives that we have added for the high school. The next item is our Middle School Program of Studies. Be it resolved upon the recommendation that the Strongsville Middle School Program of Studies for the 24-25 school year be approved. Our middle school students are just starting to schedule now. We do have a handful of differing options. One thing, I think, Mr. Gurkha, you'll be extremely happy to hear, there's a coding fundamentals course for eighth grade that will be a new addition. This is something that we've wanted to add for multiple years. Mr. Binkley was instrumental in that as well, as well as Jessica Frenchick. I have to give her a shout out. She, each year applies for and receives a grant that covers the cost of the curriculum. We also have a handful of other, we combined Tech Application 7 and 8, combined that into one course. That's Tech Application 7. And we added another Makerspace, an eighth-grade class, or, you know, Makerspace 2, due to the popularity of our Makerspace 1 course. And lastly, item five is an overnight trip for the Strongsville High School Varsity Gymnastics Team. This is what Mr. Wengler referenced earlier. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, permission be granted to the Strongsville Varsity Gymnastics Team to travel to Columbus to participate in the OHSAA Gymnastics State Championship, which will be March 1st through 3rd, 2024. Transportation will be via school bus, expenses paid with gymnastics booster funds. And again, congratulations to our gymnastics team for qualifying for the state championship.
Any questions for Aaron?
I did want to give a shout out about the coding class, because the reason I read the the programs is to decide what classes I'm going to take when I go back to middle school or high school. So I did see that.
Sign up for that.
Is there a rationale for why we, for how we title classes? Because I noticed some of them, we changed from skills to exploration, and then some of the explorations, we changed to skills.
We did make that alteration at the high school level to do somewhat of an internal coding system. So if it's an exploration class, it's targeted towards our students with special needs, rather than labeling it, you know, anything that would be special needs or something of the sort. So it's more of an exploratory option. And so anything that was called an explo or an exploratory course previously, we then reverted that name to not say exploration if it wasn't.
Okay. And then the only other question I had was, I noticed that English 11, British History Blended is no longer, it's now just English 11 Blended.
Yes.
What are we blending if we got rid of of British literature?
Um-
I'm going to have to take that class? I don't want to take that class. I was just curious.
Oh, I thought you were interested in that one as well. No?
A little bit, maybe.
That's my snarky question of, if it's if it's only one subject, what are we blending?
Um, let me read my notes here. English 12 Brit Lit Blended changed to English 12 Blended. The course description changed to better match the course objectives.
They beat you, and then you come in and you-
I don't know.
The blended, if I remember, Aaron, is is the way we're structuring the class. So it's, there's an online component as well. So it's not actually blending the subjects, it's blending how we facilitate the instruction.
He gets his bonus points.
He does.
She she let me to get that one, just so I'd look good today.
Thank you.
Next up, with Student Services, we have Andy.
Good evening, members of the board. I have one item for you this evening. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with PSI affiliates in the amount of $17,563.04 for intervention specialist services to service students at St. Joseph and John School, effective January 1st, 2024.
Any questions for Andy?
Thank you.
All right, finally, I'll turn it over to Jenny for the HR report for the month.
Thank you. For my items this month, under number one, we have the dismissal for a non-certificated staff member. Under two, resignation of a certificated staff member. Under three, resignations for certificated district substitutes. Four, resignation for non-certificated athletic supplemental contract. Retirement of non-certificated staff. Under six, appointments for certificated staff. Under seven, appointment for a non-certificated staff. Eight, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Under nine, appointments for certificated district substitutes. Under 10, appointments for certificated substitutes. 11, appointments for non-certificated substitutes. Appointment for certificated supplemental contract. Changes in hours for non-certificated subs, or I'm sorry, non-certificated staff. Changes in status for non-certificated staff. We have a contract recommendation for a non-certificated staff members. Stipend for kindergarten early entrance screening. Leave of absence for administrative staff. Leaves of absence for certificated staff. Leaves of absence for non-certificated staff. Unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff. Under 21, we have volunteers for approval. And then finally, one correction to the January 25th agenda. Under appointments for certificated staff, we needed to say revised, we needed to say revised to appointments for certificated staff coming out of the general fund and as as well the Title I Fund. So that is the correction there. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Jenny? Nothing under technology this month, so that concludes my report.
Any questions for Cameron? Next, I just need to catch up on our agenda.
It's Polaris.
Next on our agenda is Polaris Report. Mrs. Bissell.
Thank you. As I've shared in the past, Polaris doesn't meet in February officially, but what they have done, the superintendent and treasurer have met with new incoming board members. I know Laura had her meeting yesterday. Was it was it great?
I did. It was very informative. I learned a lot, and I was really glad I had the opportunity to sit down with Bob and Mike. And I got to tour the new vet facility, and it's amazing. I was very, very impressed.
So they make a point of getting to know the new board members early on in the year, as we begin our work together. So we do have a meeting upcoming on March 12th. And two things of note, one is, I haven't seen it yet, but we have construction going on on our new adult LPN program, and I've heard that construction is is running ahead of schedule. So that's fantastic in the current supply shortage and things. So that's good news. And then I want to give one shout out to one of our students who is highlighted this week as a Polaris ambassador, Cameron Miley. He's an EMT fire training student from Strongsville, and I love this, what he says about, his favorite thing about Polaris is the opportunity to experience a different kind of school environment. I think for so many of our students, that's what, one of the things that Polaris offers, and it's fantastic for them. So thanks to Cameron for being a Polaris ambassador, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. Next is, did I jump around again?
Legislation.
Next is Report on Legislation, which is me, and I do want to highlight that last week, the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee heard sponsored testimony on Senate Bill 168, which is sponsored by Senator Michelle Reynolds. There's a lot in that bill, but the thing that I think we need to pay attention to is allowing school districts to develop and use their own frameworks for teacher evaluation, instead of using a framework developed by the State Board of Education. And I know how much fun we enjoy our STS, STES, State Teacher Evaluations?
OTEZ.
OTEZ. Superintendent OTEZ, there's-
OTEZ.
You're passing all the acronym tests. But it's prob, if if it does come to bear, that'll be something that we'll see as an opportunity, but it'll also- but it'll also be a lot of work. And that concludes my report on legislation. And next is Board Liaison Reports, City Council, Mrs. Hausum.
I left my notes at home, so you might have tag teamed this one with me. I was at the meeting this week, and there was a lot of awards given out. It was really nice to see. The Knights of Columbus were there, and they honored their Dispatcher of the Year and their Police Officer of the Year. There were also awards given to a good Samaritan in the city who, you might have to help me with this, if you remember the story. She was walking her dog, and there was a child around the block choking, and the dog drug her to the child, and she just happened to be a nurse. And she helped save this child's life until the EMTs could get there. But she brought the dog, and they honored her and the dog as Samaritans of the Year. And they also had another award, oh, for Crossroads Animal Hospital. They, we have two canines on the police force, and Crossroads Animal Hospital donates their services for the canines. So I thought that was really interesting. And do you want to add anything?
You remembered the dog.
Okay.
Or dogs.
I was going to say, there were three dogs there Tuesday night, and the canines were not, one was not playing nice. And I happened to be in the middle of the two, so kept me on my toes. But that concludes my report.
Excellent. Next report is Strongsville Education Foundation. Laura?
Yes, they did meet last week, and they discussed their grants, and I just want to share our appreciation again for all they do for our students, and thank them one more time for the ukuleles. I know the Bissell family is really going to enjoy those. And as Rich said, I can't wait until there's a concert announced. I want to go hear those because my children only had recorders. So I want to hear what they can do with ukuleles. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Strongsville PTA Council. Michelle, do you have our?
PTA Council nominated and awarded Dan Faust, who's not here tonight, but he was there with us on Tuesday night to receive his award for the Ohio PTA Achievement Award. So congratulations again to Dan. There was a dance held in January called the Snowball for fifth and sixth grade, and it was a success. And it brought in $4,600 for the Council PTA. So that's fantastic news, and it goes to support other projects and scholarships coming up later this year. PTA just formed their nominating committee and is currently searching for a treasurer and corresponding secretary for the 24-25 school year. So that slate will be read at the March meeting and then voted on in April. So if you have any nominations, reach out to Katie Hallibarger, and she can help you with that. And then finally, the next meeting is March 7th at 9:30 a.m., right here in this building. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. And I was just going to piggyback. Founder's Day is always, I think, one of our best highlights of the year, and it always highlights all the things that people do for our students, for our children. And it's always just a wonderful event. Dan Faust was recognized this year, but each PTA group at each elementary school, along with the early learning preschool, all the different groups nominate and honor someone for Founder's Day. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their efforts, and it's always a very nice event to showcase the wonderful things we're doing in our district. Next is Finance Committee. Michelle, again?
Yes. There is no, nothing to report at this time. Meeting will be announced.
Excellent. Policy Committee?
Ditto.
Excellent. Facilities Committee?
Facilities Committee did have a meeting on February 6th. They discussed official, they made, there was an official needs plan updated and presented to the membership. Basically, there are some critical needs in the district on our buildings totaling approximately $25 million. That's a conservative estimate, and formal quotes have not been obtained for the work needed done. So they are just continuing to monitor and watch that. The next meeting is April 9th, 2024, 6:30 p.m., here in the admin building.
Thank you. Business Advisory Council.
We had a meeting on February 9th in the morning. We broke into four different groups. One was company research. Second was interview skills. Third was resume. And fourth was Q and A. I was part of the Q and A group, so the kids went around from table to table. And in our Q and A group, they had ready-made questions that they were supposed to ask us, but it ended up turning into just on-the-spot questions once they found out what we did for a living or what our jobs were. So it was kind of nice that they were able to think on the spot, think on the fly, instead of just reading something off of a piece of paper that they were assigned to ask us. And they actually asked questions that interested them, that then used to real life of, hey, what did you think about when you were in college? Hey, what did you think about when you were in high school doing this? Where they got real answers to real questions that actually affected them as opposed to just words on paper. Oh, and our next meeting is April 9th. No, it's not. 19th at 7:30 a.m.
Thank you. Haley, next is our Consent Calendar. Adoption of the Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in the agenda denoted as type action consent are adopted by a single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Hearing none. George, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next is Timely Information. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. A couple highlights as we go around the district this month. First of all, we want to highlight first graders in Ms. Bissenczek's class at Surar. They did some science experiments recently. They took the Valentine's Day treats, the candy hearts, and their goal was to figure out which liquid would cause the candy heart to disappear the quickest. So as you could see here, they've set them up in different trays. They had tap water, vinegar, sugar water, lemon juice, cooking oil, and clear soda. And they made their predictions, and they also took a look at how much time it took. Unfortunately, I do not have the results of the experiment. I know Mr. Faust was hard at work because he knew somebody would ask, but we do not have the results there. But what a great opportunity for the kids to use the scientific process, to make those predictions, put it in action, do some tests, and next month we'll come back and let you know what the results were.
Can we guess?
I was going to say, we should all make our guess now.
That's right.
With enough love, none of the candy hearts would disappear.
It's like the most anti-Valentine's Day thing. Well, how can you make these hearts disappear?
That's right.
Vinegar.
All right, as we go to the middle school, it's Krollick's sixth grade math class. They utilize a digital escape room. And Dave, we've got those throughout the district, right? We've got physical escape rooms, kits that they can use as well as digital. So what I love about this story is the students were struggling a little bit with coordinate plane, plotting points, reflecting points, and creating shapes on a coordinate plane. So instead of reteaching it the same way, the next day, they said, okay, she said, let's try this by putting this into this escape room challenge. So it challenged them to use their prior knowledge. They had to connect these different clues to get through each escape room, and obviously it required some of those critical thinking skills, problem-solving, resiliency, and collaboration. And they were able to do that to get from room to room as well as to work through when they got stuck. So again, a cool layer on to the curriculum that helps engage and enhance a topic that they were struggling with. So thanks to the work of our middle school math teachers there, Ms. Krollick specifically. And then at the high school, we want to highlight Mrs. Gaba and her French II class. So they've been studying different regions of France, dishes, ingredients, foods, and how to speak in the future tense. So again, instead of just doing the rote, let's practice vocabulary, let's go through and share. What they had to do was research a region, find interesting people, places, interests. They had to choose a regional dish from that area, then they had to actually make the food, record a video of them making a food, which you could see in the bottom right, and use their language skills to describe how to prepare it. Now, Mrs. Gaba and I have known each other for 20 years, so I think she put these French dish names in there for me to trip on as I said them, so I'm not going to do that. They made a variety of French dishes. I could say beignets and ratatouille, and some other regional dishes that they made. And they did some crepes in class to finish their project. So, you know, Ms. Gaba is a part of Jenny's District Learning Team. She's in the first group, right? She's been working with us for two years and looking at how she can integrate deeper learning experiences and model Mustang competencies into her classroom. So, you know, we talk about being resilient, collaborative, empowered, all of those things, but, you know, I love the language she uses of that, you know, kids had a choice in how they evaluated information. They were able to use the language in authentic, real-life situations, and also use creativity, work collaboratively, and while also appreciating, having that global mindset of appreciating different cultures. So awesome activities from all three levels to bring learning to life in the classrooms.
Is that third picture Brad Pitt with a superimposed mustache behind his kids?
It is, it is, yes.
That's what I thought.
He likes a beignet also.
He does. He's...
I was trying to read what his beret said on it.
Yeah. Mr. Wengler did a phenomenal job of going through the sports highlights for the winter season. As he said, a couple others that I think maybe we could add to that is our dance team, as we publicized, were OASSA state champions in the lyrical competition. They also placed in the top five in the state for every category they entered and received the nomination for best choreography. Swimming and diving had a great season as well. They finished sixth at the districts. And Owen Weiss and Estelle Friedrich have qualified for the state meet, which they'll compete in tomorrow. And we know we have a great coach in Coach Tom Stacy, and he was awarded the Boys District Coach of the Year recently, so congratulations to Tom. And wrestling is on their way, competing. Their numbers have been growing. They've continued to grow from youth to high, to middle school to high school. And they've got the sectional tournament coming up this Saturday. And as we publicized, it's been our first season for a girls' wrestling team at the high school, and they've had a lot of success, so we're excited to have that as well. And then the middle school, the middle school season as well, for our girls' basketball, our eighth grade green team captured the GCC championship to mentor Shore. That team has only lost two games this entire season, and they were both to our Strongsville Lady Mustangs. And then our seventh grade girls' team defeated Medina Claggett to claim, also claim the GCC championship. So we've got a great high school team going on and a great youth team in the wings. Boys' basketball, at seventh grade, the team finished second, and the eighth grade finished third in their overall postseason tournaments. And as we talked about, the progression in our middle school wrestling team, undefeated this season. They won three tournaments and five wrestlers qualified for the state middle school meet. So congratulations to those athletes and all of their accomplishments, and we look forward to seeing their athletic career continue at the high school. And to wrap up, we've got a lot of upcoming concerts from band to orchestra, throughout and all-city band concerts, as you can see the dates on the screen. And always a highlight of the school year is the Strongsville High School Musical. So coming up towards the end of March, we've got three nights of Chicago Teen Edition. They've been stressing the Teen Edition because if you've seen Chicago, there's some little more of adult theme than some of that.
Let's stress the Teen Edition.
Yes, so it is the Teen Edition.
It's not jail, they go to detention.
Yeah, and so we're excited to see our talented students onstage, and tickets are available online as well as at the door. So with that, that concludes our timely information updates.
Thank you. Next is Board of Education Other. Do we have any others? I have one other, and I just wanted to compliment the team. Two weeks ago, we had our State of the Schools address, and I loved everything Cameron had to share, and it was great. But what was really awesome was the exhibit portion of it, where we got to go into the middle school. And I just wanted to share, for me, it's just very satisfying to see young people speaking well, sharing what they're passionate about. I had two young men from the middle school who were really excited about math. And they weren't mathletes, they were math...
Math...
Mathemagicians, thank you. And they were as excited as you can be, and they wanted to, they, it wasn't just, I'm a mathemagician. They gave you a project or a problem, and they walked you through it, and it was just fun to see how much they were involved in it. And then there was a young lady who talked about the intermurals program, and it was something as simple as bowling, but it was really fun for her and impactful, and it was joyful to have, to listen to her talk about it. There were kids from the elementary school talking about their favorite books. There was a really nice contingent of students from our theater program, and Mr. Jenkins talking about the plays. And I just thought it was a great way to tell the community what we do and why we do it, and it's the students that really speak the best. And all of, from the superintendent to the administration, to the teachers, who were all there and shared their passion for what we do day in and day out, that was wonderful. But really, the icing on the cake was the students. And they're our ambassadors. They're the ones that explain why we're passionate about everything from trailers and education and what we do with the treasurer. So I just wanted to compliment everyone on it, and it would be fun to do it every year, wouldn't it? That concludes my Other.
Can I add, piggyback off what you said?
Of course you can.
That mathemagicians group sent their first team to the math counts competition this past weekend, and in addition to 12 individual competitors, and they were quite successful. One of our students, Luke Huber, finished second overall in the individual program, so he'll go down to states in March. And then our team finished fourth, just outside the trophy range. But a great first showing for those, for that program. We added that as a supplemental this year for the first time, and very successful so far, so looking forward to seeing what they do.
Okay, next is Meeting Notification. We have a special Board of Education meeting executive session, February 26th at 6:15 in the meeting room right here. We have a regular Board of Education meeting work session, March 14th at 7:00 p.m., right here. And we have a regular Board of Education meeting, March 28th at 7:00 p.m., in the Administration Building right here. We do have need for executive session on the topics of...
To consider the employment and discipline of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes. The motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 9:35. We have no expectation for further business. Thank you for your attention, and have a nice evening.